Okay, we're resuming our, we had our special meeting, we took a short break. Now we'll do the regular meeting, and since we've had the pledge, we'll just continue on. I don't believe there's any additional agenda and consent calendar items. Any delegations? Anyone from the public like to speak? Or Ben, do you want to wait until we talk to? Since you're representing them, you'll be able to come up and talk to the planning grant. Next on is the approval of the minutes. Is there a?
Okay, I'll move to approve the East Line Board of Selectmen regular meeting minutes of February 2nd, 2022.
Second. Okay, it's been moved to seconded. Any comments? All those in favor signify by saying aye.
Aye.
And I will move to approve the special budget meeting minutes of February 8th, 2022.
Okay, it's been moved, is there a second?
Second.
Any comments or corrections?
Yeah, I was not present at that meeting, however, I did watch it through the video, so, and I did review the notes, so I feel like I can vote.
Most definitely, sure. Okay, all those in favor then signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Opposed? Abstentions? Okay, it carries unanimously. Consent calendar.
I'll move to approve the consent calendar for the regular meeting of February 16th, 2022, in the amount of $18,393.18.
Is there a second?
Second.
It's been seconded. All those in favor signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Opposed? Abstentions? It carries unanimously. Moving on, the first thing we have is, this basically is related to the Samuel Smith property up here. Gary Geishel provided an application, this is so that we can get some funding for a matching grant to help have a structural analysis done on the roof at the Samuel Smith house. Mr. Bullock is here. Ben, if you'd like to get up and speak to this, do you have anything you could add to? If you just have to go up to the microphone.
I can, I think we'll have questions.
So. Give you your chance to speak. Anything you want to add? Explain what the grant is for, since you're very much involved with the Samuel Smith.
The grant is required by the state of Connecticut, SHPO, the State Historic Appropriations Office. We put in for grant almost two and a half, three years ago to do the roof on the Farmstead house. Because of COVID and a lot of other different things, it took until last July to get approved. And the grant was for $10,000, and the town has accrued $10,000. That was some funds from the Friends Group, we would have had enough to reshingle the house. But when I, we got our grant approved for the $10,000 of the state, they asked me to go back out for bids, which I did, and the price of the roof escalated almost 200%. So therefore, the money was not available for that. We had three other major projects for the house, and one is to replace a girth beam on the east end of the house. And the price for that was around $20,000, give or take. So, the idea was, went back to the state and asked if they could, would reappropriate their $10,000, so we could do the beam at the present time, using the tenant had been accrued for the town. A month or so later, this, the state came out, and all of a sudden they decided that we need to have a structural engineering survey done of the house, which was done back in 2014 or 15 initially, but they wanted more of an in-depth one. So they offered to provide the grant approximately $10,000 for the structural engineer, so it wouldn't cost the town anything for that. Before they would even reconsider reappropriating the $10,000. So the bottom line is, this is for the application finally, to go to the state, for them to approve the grant, approve the grant for the engineer, so we can get an engineering firm to do the structural analysis, go back to the state with the data, and they in turn will approve or disprove reallocating that $10,000. It's a long drawout, and it's very frustrating.
Yeah, and you and I have talked about it a few times, and I still thought much better letting you explain it too, so. Thank you, and Ben, thank you for saying so steadfast with this too, because, you know, I know this thing had a lot of moving parts all at once, and I appreciate you, you know, seeing it through and, you know, making sure that we got Gary to do the grant for it.
The town purchased the Farmstead in 2013. Seventeen acres of beautiful asset for the town. People are learning about it, they're enjoying it, and that's the intent, so. It's my retirement job.
Any questions for Mr. Bullock on the application, since he was involved in? Ann, go ahead.
Just one question.
Sure.
Mr. Bullock, I noticed in the application that there is a liability insurance certificate, and is that what, I mean, do you also need to have a title insurance? I was just curious, because there's a letter from the lawyer that, from attorney Zamarka, that we do own the property.
Yeah, that, I can talk to that too. Yeah, no, we do not, we're all set with that.
You're all set?
That's already been resolved.
Okay.
We did not have to do it, yeah.
Okay, so the liability insurance certificate is covering you.
Yeah, we're all set.
And the grant has to be, has to go through the town, because the town owns the property. So the Friends Group writing the grant, it had to go through the town.
Yeah, that's just it.
Okay.
So, okay. Any other questions? Okay, we have a resolution there.
Yes, be it resolved that we, the Board of Selectmen, constituting the legislative body of the Town of East Line, hereby authorizes the First Selectman, Kevin A. Siri, to sign and deliver a certain funding application, historic restoration fund grant application for restoration and maintenance of the Samuel Smith House and Barn with the State Historic Preservation Office, parentheses, SHPO, of the state of Connecticut.
Is there a second?
A second.
Seconded by Ann. Any further discussion? Thank you, Ben, for everything, and all those in favor signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Opposed? Abstentions? It carries unanimously, so. Ben, you're welcome to stay, or?
I'll just stay here and listen.
Thank you.
I mean, you know, you needed audience.
Okay. Moving on, we have one appointment tonight for John Smith on Clark Lane. He had been a member of ZVA, and we just, his term expired, and we just didn't reappoint him. He wished to be reappointed, so we're all set to do that.
So move to appoint John Smith to Clark's Lane, Niantic, as a member on the zoning Board of Appeals for the Town of East Line, with a term to expire on January 5th, 2022.
Is there a second?
Second.
Yep, yes, that's right.
No.
That's, yeah, that's a wrong.
Oh, yeah.
Twenty-six, yes.
I'm sorry.
Second, should be twenty.
All right, so with the term, with a term to expire on January 5th, 2026. Okay, thanks.
All right, Cindy, one merit, but anyway, but five merits for everything you've done in the last couple of days, so you're still ahead by four. So anyway, all those in favor, the motion signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Opposed? Abstentions? Carries unanimously. Okay, we have finance approved the funding for the Pump Out Boat, so we have to schedule a town meeting for that on March 2nd. So we have to have the call to the town meeting.
Okay, so, move the following. Town of East Line notice of special town meeting. Notice is hereby given of a special town meeting of the Town of East Line to be held on March 2nd, 2022, at 7:00 PM Eastern Time, at the East Line Town Hall Upper Meeting Room for the following purposes. One, to consider and act upon a special appropriation and transfer in the amount of $12,500 from CNRE Fund 32, account 32-70-300-500-999, parentheses, Townwide Projects, to an account to be established titled, in parentheses, in quotes, Pump Out Boat. And two, to transact any other business proper to come before the meeting, dated at East Line, Connecticut, the 16th day of February 2022, East Line Board of Selectmen.
Is there a second?
A second.
Seconded by Ann. Any comments? All those in favor signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Opposed? Abstentions? Carries unanimously, so we're all set there. Moving on, discussion, possible action on the pension commission ordinance. What we can do is, we, explains the situation here, we'll have, there'll be a public hearing on the ordinance, and next, at our next meeting for March 2nd. And then, if there's, after we have the public hearing, and receive any comments on that, and we're required to do this because it's an ordinance, and, you know, if there's no questions, then we'll adopt it, and then it becomes effective shortly after that, after there. What we did is, we did incorporate the, this change is made, where it says, "The First Selectman and Finance Director and Human Resource Director shall be ex officio members. They shall not have a vote and shall not be counted in determinate form." So those were incorporated into that, which I think was a good idea. So, we have to read. Yeah, we don't have to read the entire.
That's how the term is for targets, I mean?
Okay, I thought we were going to try to get them to try to avoid having, but if we have to read it, we have to read it, so.
We can't do as attached?
I think we can do as attached, because it's even, even posting the public hearing in the paper, when it's posted, we're able to refer to, as see attached, and how people can access a full copy of the document. So let's just go, notice is hereby given, the following ordinance, as attached, as attached, so we don't have to read that.
Just a point or a question. The 3B is the discussion of possible action of the ordinance itself, so do we need to do that prior to our scheduling that public hearing?
I believe we have to have the public hearing before we can enact an ordinance.
Yeah.
I didn't understand.
We have to have the public hearing before we enact any ordinance. So that the public can offer their comments on it. So, we wouldn't be actually taking any action on it.
Yeah, so what is that? I'm just curious what the action.
I thought you were just talking about whether we're okay with the way.
Oh, yeah.
Maybe that's, I guess, that's, that our amendments have been.
I was moving on too fast, I'm sorry.
Yeah, it's okay, it's okay.
A long day. So any comments on the, with the ordinance as amended, that we took, the comments, before we move on?
They were incorporated, it looks like.
Yes, they were.
Okay.
Yeah. And, you know, it, and the members right now are John Waller, Denise Hall.
Bob Curry.
Bob Curry.
Beth Hogan.
Beth Hogan, and we need one more now.
Employee.
An employee, so, yeah.
requirements, okay. All right.
Okay, and so now, moving on, we have to schedule a public hearing before we have to have that, before we can act on it, we have to be able to, we're required to take input from the community if they sort of wish to give it to us.
Okay, notice is hereby given of a public hearing to be held by the East Line Board of Selectmen on March 2nd, 2022, at the East Line Town Hall at 108 Pennsylvania Avenue, Niantic, Connecticut, to begin immediately following a special town meeting, which will commence at 7:00 PM. To receive comments regarding the following ordinance entitled, Ordinance Establishing a Pension Board as.
As attached.
As attached to our minutes.
Also, make sure a copy is from the town clerk's office.
Yeah.
Yes, and.
Yeah.
And if a copy will appear in the office of the town clerk.
Okay, it's been moved. Is there a second?
Second.
Second. Moved and seconded, any discussion on it? All those in favor signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Opposed? Abstentions? It carries unanimously. Moving on, Ann, now we're up to your subcommittee.
Okay, okay.
Which has been really busy, as we know.
Yes, yes, absolutely, so, you know, we're really in the thick of things in, on our subcommittee, the ARP Subcommittee, American Rescue Plan Funding, and our, and our building to a recommendation for Board of Selectmen. So, we've been meeting monthly since January, we, meeting weekly, rather, since January 20th. We, business and nonprofit applications are due this Tuesday, coming up the 22nd, in the afternoon at 2:00 PM. Town requests, we've heard a number of presentations, and we're trying to wrap those up tomorrow. I'm hoping for a reading and deliberations and discussion at our following two meetings. So that'll, so that, our goal is to produce a report for the Board of Selectmen by March 16th. I'm not entirely sure we'll be able to do a draft report, but I think the report will be forthcoming for the, for the meeting on the 16th. Just wanted to point out that, sort of hanging over the head, or the body of this committee, you know, there's, there's a number of things happening, which were also, I mean, it's all good timing, but it's all happening at once, so, beside the fact that we're in a budget cycle and producing a capital improvement plan for the year ahead. The final rule from the Treasury Department was issued, and so understanding the parameters of that, and understanding how it changed the interim rule, all of this stuff has happened at once, we've been able to go to seminars, get information, CCM has been very helpful, but just know that that's happening, again, great timing, but all at once. And at the same time, as Kevin will discuss later, we've gotten more information about how the federal infrastructure bill will begin to work, and I'll leave that to him to, to discuss later. So, we have a lot of things floating out there, which are kind of, you know, affecting us in some way, but we're working through all of it as best we can. You know, all of this, to me, is getting us to look closely at, you know, our pandemic community needs and post-pandemic community needs, you know, and as well as the town government needs, you know, short term and long term. So, it's, it's kind of a lot at once, but in some ways, at some point, you have to jump in and do this. You know, you have this money sitting here, we've spent a certain amount of it, the rest is left, we have deadlines on the federal government side, you know, of allocating by December of '24, spending all of those resources by the, by '26. So, at some point, you need to make those assessments about the effect of the pandemic, and you need to jump in. So, I think, whenever you jump in, it's going to be work, we just happen to have a lot else happening. But again, it's not the worst timing, because at least, we're not dealing with old rules from the Treasury Department, we're dealing with the correct set of rules.
With the current final rule.
The current final rule, so, it's kind of interesting. But, yeah, so, looking forward to continuing to move on.
And anyway, I think you've, how many applications have you gotten, or do you? I mean, when I ask you from who, I'm just about, how many have you gotten so far?
Well, it's, it's hard to say. On the community side, I'll say, under a dozen at this time, just to give you a ballpark idea. On town side, we don't have that many departments, but within a department, there might be multiple smaller requests. So that's kind of what the lay of the land, yeah, right now.
Okay. And I have one too for you, because you would ask me today if I had gotten together with Julie, and.
Okay.
And Julie, at the time, because, you know, as I'll mention, Select Wisconsin, we get there, we get some more weather coming in the next day or so, to help us out, so.
Okay, sounds good, thanks.
Any questions for Ann on the ad hoc committee? Thank you for, go ahead.
Is the expectation of the report that you give to us is going to include all applications, and then where you drew the water line? I was going to say, here's $20 million for the requests, and here's where we drew the $3 million line at?
I've actually drafted an outline of that, which I, we can share if you, if you wish, I can share, certainly Board of Selectmen outline of what that report is going to look like, of the contents of that report. And so, I mean, basically, we're looking to sort of divide the pie, and then, for every request, there'll be kind of, you know, recommended, not recommended, partially recommended, you know, other, other potential, you know, possibilities, that, so, so that gives you a clue of what it'll look like, you know, so.
But all those decisions are going to come to the final recommendations that you give to this board?
Yes, yes.
Not just these are the ones that we approve?
Correct, correct. So, so nothing will be out of your purview, whether it was a super de-duper application, or an application completely deficient, or even off the, out of, out of the realm of possibilities. Just, you know, you acknowledge it, you figure out what is wrong, and it gives you opportunities, the board, to, to take a look back. There will be gray areas, I can tell you that now. There are, there are applications for which, the use issue, you know, is it an appropriate use under the regulations, Treasury regs, and the statute? There's going to be a question, and that will be another category. Needs more information, needs council's help, something like that, so, you know.
The, the infrastructure relationship to the ARP, is there going to be some kind of, the way I read the ARP, it says basically, if you can get funding other places first, try that, and then come to ARP.
The thing is, with the Billion Better America, some of the grant requests, and we'll, we'll talk about this in just a few minutes, and here again, this was just so, so you'll have a chance to look over the next couple of weeks, so we can discuss it in more detail. But some of them, for instance, when it, when we come down to watershed protection applications in February, so that's fairly close, but you won't know if you get those, the applications will be going in, as I think with water and groundwater storage and conveyance. You know, those are, watershed protection, I mean, I think we have some projects that we definitely will fit in that, but the thing is, will we know, at what point will we know we've got that funding?
And that's going to be the hard decisions, I think, is that, are we going to want to earmark some of the ARP money and say, okay, we want to spend this, but we're not sure if we're going to get money here, so we're going to take that, we're going to say that ARP is going to fund it, but we're also going to try to get infrastructure money, and if infrastructure money comes in, then the ARP.
Well, yeah, and I think, and I was going to talk to Ann about this a little bit, or we'll talk, at the next meeting, do we want to have a, okay, this is the list of what we're doing with our, our funds too, but if money becomes available because of the infrastructure thing, what comes?
And that's why, and that's why I asked if we're going to have that water.
Well, no, I think, I think that's what, Ann, I think that's what the plan is.
Just one point, and Kevin will speak to this, but the, so, the one major point about the infrastructure bill is that it operates through a grant process, so we're not given a hunk of money.
Yeah, you don't know.
Move at the speed of the river.
Yeah, so it's a competitive grant process, so.
Yeah.
You may be completely in the league or not in the league, so.
Yeah, yeah. So, but that's a good point, though, because, you know, if, if it's an absolute priority for us, that needs to be done, and we, yeah, so, and, oh, and then if you get the grant request, but the grant request, you put in a grant, and it's 500,000, and you get 300, okay, we're, we can, you know, that type of thing, so. It's going to be a, a little bit of a challenge, but, you know, here again, you know, it's like the, the movie Mr. Dees Goes to Town, he inherits millions of dollars, and he, and he's tired of it, and he just wants to get rid of it, and has no trouble with people coming to try, to say, yes, we'll take something like that. So, anyway. Okay. Okay, moving on, we come to, we've been here for a while anyway, but we're moving fast for our regular meeting. Ex officio reports, anything for us, Ann?
Yeah, I wanted to do the board of education, and when I spoke to them, I told them how the public safety building, how the police have moved into it, and how we had taken a tour of the public safety building, and two of the members requested, and said people have been talking to them, that people wanted to take an actual tour of the building versus a virtual tour, that they're really interested in seeing what's been done with the building. So that's something I wanted to bring up to the Board of Selectmen.
And I've talked to the chief about it, and he's working on it, because he said if this were a perfect situation, where you're building something that didn't open, opened all at once, then you could have brought him in for the tour before everything, but dispatch was in, so he has to figure a way to make sure it's cordoned to where people don't wander into wrong areas, you have people on there, so he is looking into doing it. He wants, basically, for the weather to improve a little bit, the COVID numbers to really come down a little bit more, so he said that, that's driven a little bit, but the plan is to do that, we just want to promise it's in the next two weeks or so, and we want to have, make sure everything is fully operational, because that's when we saw it, they were still doing some work out in the Sallyport. We'd like to be able to, to show people, obviously, there's areas they won't be able to see, but as much as possible of that, so I think that we're all aware of that, and we want to do it, but we thought maybe the virtual tour, at least let people see something now.
Yeah.
So, but thank you for bringing that to us.
Yeah, so the other issue also, that the, we were originally supposed to hear from Jeff Newton to present the budget for the education on February, I think it was 23rd, and I mentioned that, and he said, no, it has to occur after February 28th, so I think right now, it's tentatively scheduled for March 2nd.
I haven't, the, February 23rd, meeting at 7:00, next week is Park and Rec.
Yeah.
And then the 2nd will be at 5:30, or 6:00.
No, that's what she, that's what she just said.
That he's, he's not going to be presenting on the 23rd.
No, he's not.
No, no, yeah, no, he, the 2nd at 6 o'clock, he said.
Yeah, I'm sorry, it's because I didn't communicate to everybody that we.
Well, that was today, that all it got settled with Jeff, so that's not a problem.
So I think it's going to be merged 2nd, is my understanding.
Yep, at, at 6 o'clock, and he promises it won't take that long, so, for our regular meeting. But I'm going to try and keep as much of that meeting for deliberations for us anyway, for our, once we hit the regular meeting on the, on the 2nd, so. Except for, we do have the town meeting, then the ordinance, then the public hearing and so forth, but.
Kevin?
Yes.
Yeah, so, when, when we had originally picked all the dates, we had planned to have the board of events do their presentation on the 23rd, but since they are not going to be doing it on the 23rd, we set your meeting next Wednesday on the 23rd to do your deliberations.
Yeah, but here again, we'll.
It's up to the board of that.
And we'll probably.
You can't let there's any more elsewhere.
Yeah, we can't, we can't suggest, but here again, just in case we have, more deliberations, so we'll keep as much of that too, and Parks and Rec normally doesn't take too long anyway. Dave's, you know, budget is fairly flat, and not that, that difficult, so.
Are there other, just refresh my recollection, are there other departments other than Parks and Rec to, to cover?
No.
So on the 23rd, we're also going to be doing, start deliberations?
Deliberations, right, after Dave's budget, we'll, we'll do some deliberations.
Okay.
Ann, when, when are they having the public hearing on their budget, the Board of Ed?
I think it's the 28th, right? Yeah.
I think it's prior to them setting their own budget.
Yeah, because the earliest date that we could get together was, I think, the 2nd.
Yeah, because they didn't, exactly.
Yeah, I think it's at 6 o'clock.
Yeah.
One of those agendas have been filed, FYI.
Okay.
I just didn't.
It's all right, that, that was, that was this afternoon type of stuff, so that's fine. Okay. All set, Ann? Okay, anything, Bill?
No, the planning meeting was held on the same day as one of our budget reviews.
Oh, that's right.
Tomorrow night, so I had to have the last report.
Ann?
Nothing, no meetings, no ex officio for me till upcoming.
Well, water and sewer next week, but.
Yes, right.
But I can take care of that. Ann, how about you?
My meeting got canceled, so I don't have anything.
Roseanne?
Well, we heard information on aging tonight.
Yeah.
We're upset.
Okay. Okay, moving on to my report, I handed out the Building of Better America. This, I, I got this, and I gave it to Ann a couple, and sent her a couple days ago, and these are, a lot of things here, there's a lot of things that don't apply to us, but most of it would be pretty much fall under Public Works, Buildings and, Buildings, you know, basically Facilities, and Water and Sewer. So I've scheduled a meeting next Tuesday with the, with Joe Berga and his staff, to see what in these are something that we'd be interested in, and I think this is where, you know, we'll talk more about this in two weeks, so everyone get a chance to familiarize themselves with this a little bit more. But all these are grants, and this is where Roseanne brought up about, you know, a grant writer. There's something I'll research, so I'll have some information for you in, in a couple weeks, to see how this is done, and if it's something we could look into, because I'm sure, when you look, it says, wow, there's $2.5 billion for this, this is nationally, so that's a lot of people looking for the funds, so we want to be sure we have someone who's familiar with possibly doing a lot of these federal type of grants. I don't have an answer yet, I have asked, is this going to be funneled through the state or through the federal government? I think it's through the federal government, because if you look at the last page, it says Agency contacts, it's, it gives all, you know, Department of Interior, it looks like the federal government, so I'll get some more answers, but I just want to give this, get it out to everyone, so they have a chance to familiarize yourself before we start discussing it. As you can see, while I was on the seminar, I did doodle on it a little bit, and filled in a couple blocks, you know, the letters, but I did highlight the Brownfields Remediation Program, Energy Resilience, SoCo, State and Local Cyber Security Grant, what, you know, Water and Groundwater Storage and Conveyance, these are the things we've talked about, so I think, you know, it takes some time to take, look through this over the next couple So I think, you know, it takes some time to take, look through this over the next couple of weeks, so, and then we'll have this as an agenda item in a couple of weeks, rather than, you know, doing that, but I just want to get this out to everyone. Yes, Anne?
Yeah, just a quick question, so if, if we're thinking that we're going to be getting some of these grants, then will we not, will we not then give money through the ARP then?
Well, that's what we were talking about, it's, that's a hard thing, but, but here again.
Because we don't know if we're going to actually.
Yeah, you can apply, I mean, oh, it makes sense, for instance, the, the water tower that, on the Post Road, which is in need of repainting and whatnot, that looks like it would, to me, would fall under the waters, you know, water, what's the last one there? Emergency watershed protection and that type of thing. But here again, the federal government might not agree with that, and, you know, so that's where we have to, you know, when we start talking about the ARP money, we should, let's hope we have a better feeling on this at, at that time. So, because these are some of the questions from the Southeast, the Council Government Meeting, it's one of the same questions, like, you know, we have the money set aside.
Money, the water.
Yeah, like, yeah, because you, you've pointed out that water and sewer are primary, but this looks like that has it, too, so.
Yeah.
You know, those are some good questions that we'll have some better, that's, you know, but here, that's why, you know, get this information out to you as fast as possible to look at it for a couple of weeks, and we have a better idea.
If I could just say one thing, thanks.
Yes.
And I don't want to say this is my gut, but, look, I went to that bill.gov, if you go to the bill.gov website, which is at the top of the page, that's a, that's a White House website, and it is enormous.
Yeah.
And if you think the federal regulations, the 400 pages of the federal regulations for ARP are meaty, this is looking like another big, big, you know, piece of legislation with all, lots of moving parts, and on top of it has the grant aspect to it, the competitive grant aspect. So, yeah, I, I honestly couldn't spend too, too long on this buildup.gov, because I was thinking, oh my goodness, this is, this is not going to be easy. So, we'll see what it all, how CCM and everyone else reduces it and boils it down for everyone, but it looks like it's not going to be.
Well, the, the water and groundwater storage and conveyance, Alex, I gave this to the department heads as well, that were both being impacted by, and Alex, the town engineer, who, you know, who has spoken very impressively, said, we do have some conveyances with our, with our, with our groundwater right now, because the pipes are old and so forth like that, so he said, this is something we would definitely want to look into, because to request ARP money from it, you know, be too expensive. So he, you know, something that he's already shown some interest in, so, yeah, I think it's, but here again, like you said, the red tape on this one's going to be.
Well, it depends, too, I think, is how, I mean, what you actually need, what kind of information, how extensive these grants are. Do you know what I mean? Like, what we have to provide in order to get a grant.
Yeah.
So I think that's something that.
Yeah, we're, yeah, we're, yeah, that's, we'll, we'll have a lot more information for you in a couple of weeks.
Okay.
And also, the timing of, of these two, two programs, I think we've got to somehow identify what the timing is going to be.
Yeah.
Exactly.
And, and really have a matrix, maybe of some sort, to anticipate what we can do on, on the either system, and what the timing will be for each one, so that we don't end up missing out on both programs.
Yeah.
Might be a lot to it.
Yeah, and, and, yeah. It's a very good point, yeah.
Okay.
So, but interesting, too. Moving on, oh, I, no.
Do we know, do we have, or can we get visibility to what the state's putting in for?
Uh, it's, we, we could try.
Things like 95, all right, we know that they need to put some work in 95, is that on their list of things to do? Is there anything, I mean, there's a lot of state roads in East Line, is there any other roads that they want to enhance or do something with? 161 or?
There, there is some work they're going to do on 161 coming up, you know, obviously with the, the 161 corridor, you know, starting just south of the four corners in, in Niantic, uh, the East, uh, East Line four corners are up by this.
I don't know, I don't know, I don't have anything specific in my head, other than 95.
Yeah, but, but we can look into that, you know, because we, we have a list of projects that the state just sent us coming up, and 156, but it's nothing, it's not a major construction thing, it's just a couple of things they're going to be doing. We got that, so I can look at that, and Joe's Burgon's got good contacts within the state, so we'll research that as well. That's a good point. Anything else on that topic? Okay, COVID, our numbers are heading in the right direction, and the telltale sign is the hospitalizations, because at our department head meeting last week, Steve Mansfield said, you know, they're, they're still, you know, recommending masks and so forth, and they said that the actual numbers are probably higher than what is being advertised, because so many people are doing the at-home tests now, so that doesn't get reported. But the good news is the hospitalizations are roughly at, they're up around 2,000, now they're just a little over 300, so that is a very good sign, too. To show you what, I mean, we were going through, Sandy, probably, what, eight to 10 boxes of masks a day, when, when we started handing them out here, and we have cases of kits here now that people know are available, and no one's coming in for test kits, no one's coming in for masks anymore. So, yeah, it just, and, and just like boom, within a week, it went down to, to nothing, so.
Thank you, Ross.
Oh, no, we're not, we're not, we are not getting, we are not getting rid of any of them, and this way, there's a good expiration window on the kits, so we're making sure if, you know, if something pops up again, and, you know, Julie Wilson, our Assistant Emergency Manager Director, is working on it, how do we, if we get caught in that situation, how do we better distribute them? I mean, I, I think with the manner in which we got them, and we're asked to get rid of them, we, we did as well as pretty much anybody, but, you know, now we can think, what if again, so, and let's hope it doesn't. Thursday into Friday, and Friday is supposed to be some really heavy winds and some rain, we're, we're, got a report from Demos saying 55 to 65 mile an hour gusts. Let's hope that that's not the case, but apparently it won't be coming in an area which, it's a southerly wind, so it shouldn't, you know, coming, let's hope it doesn't bring in too much, any flooding or so forth like that. Our emails, your emails, are rolling out tomorrow, so you might be getting contacted by Carmen. She has your current emails, and she'll be reaching out to you, and she'll walk you through it, she's done a few tests, and they've gone really, really well, so look for that to be happening. She apologizes for the length of time, but, you know, basically much all of her time was tied up, you know, for getting the public safety building up and running. Two, we have two police sergeants out injured right now. We had one in a training accident a week ago, who required ankle surgery. He's recovering well, but he'll be out for a while, and I sent an email to his morning, another sergeant, while in his vehicle, waiting to make a turn into Cheyney Park this morning, was struck from behind by a, a vehicle. The seat he was in, it broke the seat. I mean, fortunately, his injuries are minor, and he's recovering now, he's out of the hospital, which is obviously the most important, but it's that time of the morning where you're getting ready to go up onto the bridge, and right in your face is that sun glare. So the one, the person said that he didn't notice it at all, so fortunately, no one hurt, you know, vehicles can be repaired, but this is, we want, the last vehicle that had this license plate number 103, EL 103, had the same problem, so maybe we'll take that license plate and melt it down, or do something with it, too. Finally, Amtrak fence, we've seen it, we, we got an indication, I think I mentioned before, that it looked like it was going to be that aluminum, black aluminum picket-type fence, be eight feet, and it would curve over at the top. If you're driving down Smith Avenue or down Penn Avenue, and it was there, that's all you would really see, the fences, it would obstruct the view. So, a week ago, Monday, I reached out to Elizabeth Regan at the day, gave her some background, and so forth like that, and she did a really nice article for us, reaching out to our community members. Monday, I got a call from Beatrix at Senator Blumenthal's office. He sent a, a, an email to Amtrak, asking them to relook at it, too, and as I said to her, I'm sure his email was, well, taken a lot more seriously than mine was. So, so I said, and they said anything they can do, so I sent her pictures of what they anticipated. A gentleman in town said, hey, look, I found what was, Amtrak has had along the railroad tracks up in North Hampton, and it's sort of the black vinyl chain link, two-inch chain link fence we have at, at our little park here. And so I forwarded that to Amtrak, as well as to Senator Blumenthal's office, so, and they, there's been some Facebook activity saying, contact me, contact Holly, contact Congressman Courtney, as well, so we're hoping that, that things will work out. I spoke to Jane Brophy of Amtrak last week on Friday on the phone, and she said they're still looking through their corporate security to see if they can come up with some potential options for that, but nothing definitive from them. So that's where that stands. I'll keep you advised on that. And that's pretty much my report. Communications, well, the thing I gave you about building back Billion Better America, public comment, Sandy, you could, no, okay. All right, we'll just do a quick, the second, number nine, the personnel pension contribution,